All right, so good afternoon, everybody. Could everyone please take their seats? Bates, Ms. Bates, could you please take your seat, please? Ms. Gums, please take your seat. All right, are we all ready? I know you're all visiting with each other. Apparently you haven't seen each other in a little while, so let's see if we can get done with this meeting quickly so that you can all say hello to each other and go out for some lunch or for some coffee. And you've all asked to be, having your meetings be efficient, so let's try to listen to what your requests have been, that we have efficient meetings that are responsive to needs of our constituents, but don't belabor so that we can have a quick substantive meeting. So thank you for that, just following your direction of your request. With that, clerk, could you please call the meeting to order?
I'm calling it to order.
What, it's 103. Roll call, Ellen?
Ellen, on the way.
Okay, thank you. Bates, Bates here. Herman? Doherty? Davist?
Davist here.
Ford? Gums?
Gums here.
Iqbal? Jubey?
Jubey here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Kias?
Vice President.
Leonard?
Leonard here.
Lewis? Molina? Roth?
Roth here.
Sanchez, present.
Silva?
Silva is here.
Rathman? Sorges? Tarver? Tepey?
Tepey here.
Williams?
Williams here.
Young?
Young here, remote.
And Madam Chair, you're present, you have a quorum in person. Alrighty. Mr. Young is requesting to attend remotely. Sir, could you state your reason why you'd like to attend remotely?
On business, coming back right now.
Debbie.
From business.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite-
It's a work conflict.
Oh, work, okay.
Business, it was business related, just coming back right now, thanks.
Oh, okay, okay. Do we have your permission to allow him to attend remotely?
Okay.
No objections.
The board has indicated confirmation, you're welcome to attend. Alrighty. Mr. Linder, I would ask you, but I know you have, your voice is a little hoarse, could you possibly just sit? Would you be able to do the pledge of allegiance since you have not been gracious with that for a long time, and we're welcoming you back? Please, sir, stay seated. Please, welcome back, we're so happy to see you. Absolutely, absolutely. There are no minutes to approve. I believe we have two people who have signed up to speak today. Mr. Lawson, are you here? And sir, you have three minutes.
Doesn't sound like it.
Press the green button.
Good, okay, good. This morning, three minutes, I'd just like to tell you a little story. To me, government budget work is a little bit like model rockets and permanent records. In about fourth or fifth grade, over at Holy Angels in Aurora, Illinois, I really liked model rockets, and it was a way of playing with fireworks without breaking the rules. So today reminds me a little of an afternoon a long time ago, when I had a rocket engine, I had a fuse, I had the fuselage tool, the tube, and then only two fins that attached to the side of the tube to make the rocket. It's kind of like having a little bit of revenue, a little bit of expense, the budget work. So I lived on Harden Avenue across from Mr. De Frady's, who was the president at that time of merchants' bank over on Broadway. About a block further south was the Equipto factory, and I glued on the fins, shoved the engine in the tube, attached the fuse, and I lit the damn thing. What could I have possibly been thinking? I had it in the driveway of, you know, in the front yard, and the thing took off across the street toward Mr. De Frady's window, and he's reading his paper that afternoon, and he got a surprise, and by the time it almost got there, I was upstairs already with my head under the pillow. Later on that afternoon, a police officer naturally stops over, might have been Sergeant Gums, and goes, you know, if you ever do that again, son, you'll have a permanent record. My gosh, I couldn't run for the King County Board with permanent record. So it was just like the Dominican nuns had said, you know, there's permanent record. You face an important decision today. If you vote yes, you're signing your name of approval, creating that permanent record, where you approve of doubling county general fund spending in four or five years. You're excusing serious discrepancies in the numbers that you're being given to make those decisions on, you're breaking your own rules and budget ordinances, not telling the truth to 700 non-union employees, you're eating your investment seed corn, you're scaring people with exaggerated use of reserves, you're rolling the dice on a $51 million April Fool's Day sales tax referendum, and there's no growth. So it's got a fuselage, an engine, a fuse, and there's Mr. De Frady's window.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Meyer, Jeanne Meyer. Here today. If she is not here, that concludes our public speaking for the day. So thank you, Mr. Lawson, for attending. Alrighty.
So I have some introduction I'd like to share with you, will be brief, but I think it's very important. As you know, both North Carolina and Florida has had some tragedy happen with the multitude of hurricanes and related tornadoes that have happened in the locations, mass flooding, loss of homes, loss of jobs, loss of life. And we've had a volunteer from King County who's been active in participating with the rescue efforts, and I'd like to bring up Scott, who's going to talk a little bit about what this volunteer has been doing so we can recognize that individual for their heroism. So Scott, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. I'm also going to talk a little bit about some King County fire departments that have been, were sent to Florida, and so I've got a couple pictures, Blair has a little slideshow I made for you. So if you go to the next slide, this first is about MABUS, so MABUS is the mutual aid box alarm system, that's the fire department mutual aid system in Illinois. Last week, they sent three strike teams to Florida, about 68 people representing 34 agencies. One of those strike teams was King County Agencies, you can see all the fire departments listed there. Collectively, they brought five engines and personnel, two chiefs, two shelter tents, and two light towers. They left last Wednesday evening late and got to Florida on late Thursday night, you can go to the next slide, Blair. That last slide was they were taking their oath. When they're called up like that through the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, they become State of Illinois assets, and they take that oath, they go to Florida to help Florida, and then Florida, that arrangement is Florida then pays their expenses. So they arrived in Ocala, Florida, at their fire academy, they did some training for a day or so on that Friday, and then Saturday morning, they were abruptly told they were no longer needed. The damage assessment revealed that there wasn't enough work for that many fire crews, so they sent several home, including the King County group. So they received, for their efforts to drive to Florida in fire engines, which as you can imagine probably is not as comfortable as driving in your minivan or your sedan, they left on Wednesday, got back home Sunday, and they got a day of training. So I mention it because they, all those people and all those departments stepped up right away and said, we'll send people for their time in need, and then they got down there and weren't really needed and came back. So we were going to have some fire chiefs come and talk, and I decided I would just do it myself and save them the time of coming here to see you today. So we have a great team of fire departments throughout the county that we work with, and that's as an example of, I think, of how they serve our own residents. So that's kind of the wrap-up of the fire departments going down. Next slide, Blair. So in late September, one of our volunteers, Rich Cromer, you can see the arrow above his head, Rich has been a volunteer with us for about 14 years. In his professional life, he's a emergency medical tech or EMT, and also a FEMA reservist, so he was deployed by FEMA in late September to North Carolina, and there you see him with some of his team down there. Next slide, Blair. So when he got down there, he was assigned to search and rescue operations, and that was completed, and he's now been assigned to shelter operations, so he's doing medical services for people in the shelters, and occasionally going on 911 calls in the area. Rich has been a volunteer with us for about 14 years, and he leads our medical and safety efforts, he's our safety coordinator and a great asset. So we're really proud of Rich for stepping up. Like I said, he went down in late September and is expected to be there probably about to the end of the month before he'll get sent back home. So he, so different than the MABUS group, Rich is a FEMA reservist, so because of his EMT background, he's a reservist, so when they need people like that, they call them up and they send them collectively, and then I think FEMA pays for that separately. So really proud of Rich for having stepped up to do this, and I think we're looking forward to him getting back and tell us some of the stories, and I think we can probably learn a few things from what he experienced down there. So again, we're excited that he's part of our team, and I think it's just an example of the really great team that we have here.
Thank you.
So that's all I have for you, unless you have any questions.
The one request I would have is that when Rich is coming back, if we could have him either speaking at one of our board meetings or JPS, and certainly have Julie Madden interview him, so we know exactly what he went through, because it's important for us to know. It gives, I know we've had, last summer, we had quite a bit of tornadoes come through, but it was nothing of the tragedies that were happening down in the South. So God bless him, God bless the people.
Absolutely, I've been in contact with him a little bit, had a few texts, and he's doing well, and I think he's enjoying his time. I think it's tough duty, but like I said, when he gets back, I think what I always hear from people who get the opportunity to do this kind of thing is they find it really rewarding, difficult while they're doing it, but it's very rewarding to have done and gain that experience, so we're looking forward to learning from that.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time out of your day to share this with us. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, when somebody asks you, what does the county do? Well, there's, this is what the county does, we care, we definitely care. We have nothing on our consent agenda, because that was already passed at the previous board meeting, there is no need for executive session, we have no zoning petitions, etc., so now we are into our off-agenda items. Welcome, Mr. Sorges. Good to see you, sir. I'm going to ask for your permission, because we have some items that are very, very timely, and I have to make sure that we get those passed, so I'd like to move those up quickly, because those are up on deadline. So with your permission, I'd like to move 24-428 and 24-430 to the beginning of the agenda, it would be in this following order, if you could follow me. 24-428 will be our first item, 24-378 will be our second item, 24-379 will be our third item, and number four will be 24-430, and then we can go in the other order. Did move 430, but, okay, we're just moving 428 and 430 to the head, so it'll be in this order, 428, 378, 379, and 430. So top four. Do I have any, fine, okay, no complaints, all right, let's get going then. May I have a motion in a second to discuss and possibly approve item number 24-428? Strathman will move. Strathman's second, please. Strathman's seconds. All right, is there any discussion on this? No discussion, I see none online, please call the roll. Ellen? Okay. Bates?
Bates, yes.
Herman?
Herman, yes.
Doherty? Davist?
Davist, yes.
Ford? Gums?
Gums, no.
Iqbal? Jubey?
Jubey, no.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Lena?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez? Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Yes.
Sorges?
Yes.
Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tepey?
Tepey, yes.
Williams? Young?
No.
Okay, that passes, you have four nays. All right, give me, give me a minute so I can sign this. Thank you. Literally hot, hot off the press. Alrighty, may I have a motion in a second to discuss and possibly pass item number 24-378?
Kias moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kias, thank you, Mr. Sorges. Is there any discussion on this item? None, all right, clerk, please call the roll. Bates?
Bates, yes.
Herman?
Herman, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Gums?
Come back to me, please.
Jubey?
Jubey, aye.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis? Lewis, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth? Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sorges? Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tepey?
Tepey, yes.
Williams?
Williams, no.
Young?
No.
And Ms. Gums?
Ah, yes.
It passes, two nays. And I don't have that printed out, so. May I have a motion in a second to discuss and possibly pass item number 24-379? This is the budget.
Sanchez moves.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Berman's second.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Discussion. Yes, see you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so at the risk of being called an obstructionist, I am really struggling with the accuracy of the numbers that have been presented to us in various committees over the past few months. For example, the numbers presented by finance to the departments and elected offices during their budget meetings are different than the numbers presented to us at the board. There have been multiple adjustments, including adjustments after the budget's been on public display. The projected year-end amounts in some funds are less than the actual current year-to-date amounts. The projected spending of reserves for 2024 was $16,153,803, but on September 25th, the projected reserve spending is between 10 and 14, leaving me unclear of how many reserves we actually will have. The budget continues to be based on previous budgets and not actual spending. It seems to underestimate revenues, such as no anticipated growth in property taxes or retail sales tax. There's no accounting for the holiday retail sales, even though the state recognizes that some retail sales taxes are collected or reported at different times, which is why they offer a tax true-up. I've been unable to find the money that was budgeted for positions and programs but supplanted by grants after the budget was approved. And even though the board collectively decided in 2023 to intentionally spend down our reserves held in excess of 90-day operating expenses per our county policy that was recommended by our finance director, we're now being directed to save those reserves for an unknown purpose. Unfortunately, I am not a leap and the net will come kind of person, so I won't be able to support this budget, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none. Seeing none online. Clerk, please call the roll. Okay, and I just want to clarify, this is 24-379. Bates?
Bates, yes.
Herman?
Herman, yes.
Davist?
That was a lot of stuff that we don't have answers to. Davist, no.
Gums?
Gums, no.
Jubey?
Jubey, no.
Kenyon?
No.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, no.
Lewis?
Lewis, no.
Linder?
Linder, no.
Molina?
Molina, no.
Roth?
Roth, no.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, no.
Silva?
Silva, no.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sorges? Tarver?
Tarver, no.
Tepey?
Tepey, yes.
Williams?
Williams, no.
And Young?
No.
Okay, that motion fails. All right, that motion fails, which means that we have no budget going forward. If I can bring Kathleen up here for just a minute and tell, let us know what our next steps are with this budget.
Take recommendations from the board to amend the budget as they see fit.
And when will you need those numbers by?
Well, we have to pass a budget before December 1st.
All right, and our next board meeting is-
November 12th.
November 12th? So will you require a special board meeting or a special finance committee meeting to discuss this?
I would need to know what does the board want to change in the budget.
All right, I'd like to pause before we go on with our efficiencies, because obviously we need to have a game plan so that we are, can work to pace to get this thing passed. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so the reason I voted no was because with the amount of questions that Ms. Jubey had, I didn't feel comfortable with it, so if we could, if Ms. Jubey could give those questions to, I suppose, you, and if we could get answers, that would be very helpful.
All right, I'm prepared to answer some of those questions right now.
We can, you know you do have the ability to this and change your vote before we, since we're still in the current board meeting, so we can alter this. But I would like, before we get into this discussion, if the board would like to have this discussion at today's meeting, I would like to get through the rest of the items and hold this to the end, so that we don't delay voting on the rest of, there are some very important, critical things. So would you like to have a discussion on this budget today to address some of Ms. Jubey's questions?
Yes.
I think that's enough. We have one no. Board, let me know. Yes, no, yes, yes. Okay, obviously for those board members, Mr. Young, thank you, so we have two for sure nos. Why don't we put this on pause, and we'll bring it back after we do take a vote on the rest of the resolutions presented to you, and then you can make your decision at that point. All right, so Kathleen, if you can stick around. All right, so we're, last critical item is, and Mr. Armstrong, are you on here?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you very much, give me just a minute so we can get this thing, and then we'll turn it over to you for clarification. May I have a motion in a second to approve item to discuss, possibly approve item number 24-430?
Tarver moves.
Thank you, Mr. Doug, thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, I'd like to have Mr. Armstrong just speak briefly about this, and Ms. Gums, why he's getting online, do you have a question?
Yes, I actually have a, just basically a statement. We haven't even talked about this at the county board, so-
That is accurate.
So I, you know, it's kind of a big decision, and obviously, we, wearing our other hat, we have had conversations, but I don't even know that this should be on this agenda.
I asked the same question, because of the timing that needs to happen, we were waiting until all the other taxing bodies gave the approval, meaning that we would be giving our final approval, and that is why.
And you understand my concern.
Recently passed it, so now it's our time to bring this forward, which is why Mr. Armstrong is online.
And you understand my concern is that it hasn't come up before, so I just don't feel it needs to be on this agenda until we have those conversations.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's begin the conversation.
Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Armstrong, please, could you explain to, perhaps you can answer Ms. Gums's concern, and then if you can just explain what this will do, and how everything is pretty much going to be, I believe, staying exactly the way it is, except for an additional 12 years.
That's correct. So what we're looking at is a Tiff district in St. Charles, Tiff District Number Four, which runs along First Street, which is on the west side of the river. Now, the original Tiff district was created in 2000, and it extended, 2001, I think was the effective date, and extended 23 years to 2024. Now, the original TIF district was created in two thousand and it extended, all right, two thousand and one, I think was the effective date, and extended twenty-three years to twenty twenty-four. What St. Charles is asking for is the TIF district to be extended for an additional twelve years. Now, the, the TIF district extension portion of the law is there, it limits the input really to the General Assembly. However, the General Assembly has adopted more or less of an informal policy, providing that they aren't going to take action unless they have a letter of support from each of the affected taxing districts. And that would include not only the Forest Preserve District, which you've already heard and acted upon, but also the school district, the park district, obviously, the city of St. Charles itself, although that's probably not an issue, and lastly, of course, Kane County. Now, one of the things that we were waiting on before taking a look at this was what were the other taxing districts going to do? And it appears that we are at the end of that process, and the county board is the last one to actually take a position on this or to decide whether to take a position on this. Now, I provided some information to the Forest Preserve District at the request of President Kaius. And the question is, what revenue difference would there be in a, in a given year if levying against the TIF, as new properties that would come off, and not levying against the TIF? The difference is pretty small. It's about fifteen thousand dollars. So it'd be more than it was for the Forest Preserve District, but the county has a higher tax rate. But the percentage of difference between what is levied in taxes and what could be levied, if levied to the maximum, is zero point zero three percent. That percentage would be exactly the same as it was dealing with the Forest Preserve District side, and that's because the tax base is the same either way. With that, since I know you've discussed this extensively at Forest Preserve District, rather than belabor your time, what I'd rather do is see if I can answer any questions. I do note in passing that I am expressing no opinion on what the county board should do. This is strictly a policy matter, and policy matters are correctly in front of the county board, not in front of me.
I will ask one question. If the board decides not to pass this through at this meeting, will there be, or decides not to pass this through, what is the repercussion? So one, a delay, the second one, a no pass?
So if there's a delay, the question is, when does the General Assembly need this information in quarter, in, in order to act potentially at the veto session? Because this expires in twenty twenty-four, that needs to be, it really should be done by the end of twenty twenty-four. Potentially, it could mean that a delay might mean that nothing could happen at all. A delay might be the same as not voting at all. I am not aware of what the timing is, since those are not set out by statute, but set out by General Assembly practices. That question is probably better answered by people who are in the General Assembly, meaning mostly staffers. But I can say that the city of St. Charles has been, expressed a lot of concern that if this were not done in October, they would not have the ability to have this filed and ready to go for the veto session, which would happen in November.
Thank you. Alright, are there any questions on this at all? To my, my left, to my right, yes, sir.
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Yes.
So we haven't discussed this on the county board side, but we've discussed this at length on the Forest Preserve side. It's taken that knowledge, it's very public. My summary is that if we are to, if we are going to vote against this, then well, let's say if we vote for this, what do we lose? We lose, what do you say, fifteen thousand dollars a year? If we vote against this, we gain that fifteen thousand, but we lose perhaps much of the, the goodwill that we have with the, the city of St. Charles. We lose those residents of St. Charles who some of us represent, who are now going to be on the hook for at least two million dollars a year, additional into their budget that they weren't planning on spending. That's now going to cut into their property taxes. We lose a lot of that goodwill as good neighbors, so it, overall, I don't, I think we lose more by voting against this. We lose less by voting for it, so I'm in favor of this. I think it's an easy answer, but that's just me personally. I just want to share that with you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Davist?
I would echo a lot of what my colleague just put out there, and as a St. Charles resident, I, I admit that when I first heard it, my reaction was a little bit like, why should all the rest of us, you know, pay for what appears to maybe be bad planning? Right? If they had all these years' worth, what, why do they need more? Why didn't they get it done? But as I took a little more time to reflect on that and the time period involved, and what happened during that time period, nobody could have foreseen that, so I give them a pass on that, and I, I will be supporting doing this for our, you know, our neighbors.
Mr. Linder, this is, I believe, in your district?
Yes, it is my district. I was against it, and I had a very long conversation with a person, a lot of you know Steve Weber, who was on this board, now he's in Alderweireld, St. Charles. And my, one of my concerns is that the TIFs are being misused, and that was a prime example of a misuse of a TIF. TIF is supposed to go into blighted properties that are not likely to be developed. They closed down going businesses in order to acquire the land. They forced to move the Blue Goose to a bigger property that the Blue Goose couldn't support, and it just was a poor use. On the other hand, they're stuck at this point, and I, I don't see that we can't help, we, we, we have to help them. In the discussion I had with, with Mr. Weber, we talked a little bit about the future, and some of the properties they have in St. Charles that have asked for a TIF, and they kind of are coming around to the viewpoint I had as well. And that is, you know, if you're a developer, you see a piece of property that, that you'd like to develop, you can put the money together and do it and make a profit wonderful. But it's, it's risky for the community to bankroll this thing with a TIF, and that's kind of going to be the attitude at which they approach things on down the road. The second thing I learned in that conversation was that, while we'll lose this money in several months, there's another TIF that expires, and that will add tax back to us, and I'm going to ask to extend that one. And so in terms of the gross amount that we have, we're, we're going to be ahead of the game, but we would be more ahead of the game if we didn't do this, but I, I'm voting yes now.
Okay, thank you. Alright, oh, we have a lot of hands up now. Yes, yes, Mr. Tepe. We'll just go down the row.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one was a hard, hard choice for me. I was, like Mr. Linder, I was very much against this. It, it is a misuse of the TIF was done, and part of it is that they decided to go interest-only on the loan that they took out against this years ago, kicking the can down the road. Okay? What, what finally convinced me is that it's not up to us to really force the people of the present to pay for the sins of the past. So I will be voting for this, and I will certainly say that, you know, it's, it's a shame that this happened, but I think it in the best for going forward to continue to work in a positive way in the county, so thank you.
Mr. Roth, a part of your district or at least adjacent to it?
Initially, when this was first presented at the Forest, there, there's a lot of confusion, and I think that caused some of the issue. It wasn't communicated correctly, I believe, on what the issue was. Later on, the, the city came in and, and presented, and a lot more information was passed. And I think that shows, we need to, all of us need to work closer with our cities, so we don't have this miscommunication happening in the future. We need to work together, not, not against each other.
I, that, that's always a good comment. Yes. Mr. Berman?
Madam Chair. I think, you know, one of the reasons we're at this point is that the financial reversals back in two thousand and eight make a big difference. We aren't able to invest in what they've wanted to do because of the financial situation that it, it caused this. The other idea of saying they're misused, I think that's up to Springfield as to whether they're misused or not. They're the ones that approve each one of the TIFs. So it's not something that we make a decision on. Springfield makes that decision. But I thought Mr. Sanchez was very succinct in his comments on it, and I personally feel that we should support it wholeheartedly. I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Mr. Hart, you had your hand up?
The silver lining is that TIFs work. They are, St. Charles is bringing TIF three, north of thirty-eight, east of Randall, back online. They've already passed that through their committees, as I understand it, and that means that we get about thirty-four thousand a year. That's new money that'll help, in my head, mitigate the loss to the Forest Preserve and to the county for the next twelve years. And my expectation is that on the other side, we will enjoy the bounty that comes out of a successful TIF. I'm willing to bet on that.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Gums, this will be your last time?
Oh, thank you. I just want to, I guess, try to articulate, we've said the word misused a couple of times. It seems to me they're ta, you know, previous administrations, it seems like they're taking from one bucket to fill another. I have an issue with that. I've, I've a lot of issues with why this TIF should not be extended. And you, you know, I have to take off two different hats here. But the blighted situation, I just can't, I can't overcome a lot of those issues. I feel like I feel like we're going to be asked to extend other ones going forward, and there has to be a standard in my brain, and I think I'm going to follow that, and I'm not going to support this. It has nothing to do with ill will, or, or I, I, I think that's kind of, with all due respect, you know, governments don't always agree with one another, and I think that to suggest that we wouldn't have a good relationship with St. Charles underestimates their abilities and our abilities to, to cohesively work together. I don't think that would be the case. Just my two cents on it. You know, there, there has to be a standard in my brain, and I don't think this one follows it, so.
Alright, okay. So full disclosure, back in the day when I was on the St. Charles School Board, I did vote to support this. That was a long time ago. So I'm one of the originators of the vote of support of this TIF, so that was done by D three oh three. So with no further discussion, I think we're ready to take the vote. Clerk, please call the roll. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Gums?
Gums, no.
Jubey?
Jubey, no.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kaius?
Kaius, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeis?
Upstate.
Tarver?
Tarver, no.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams?
Williams, yes.
Young?
No.
It passes. Four nays.
Sixteen, no.
It passes. I'm sure St. Charles appreciates your vote, so they can move forward with their own financial planning. Alright, that takes care of the immediately urgent, timely ones, so now we can go back in normal order. Motion in a second.
Can we refresh what's been crossed off and what's not?
Oh, of course, of course. Twenty-four, four two eight. Three, seven, eight.
What's not or has been?
What has been.
Well, what, that's, I thought you asked, or what has been?
Four two eight.
The next one is three, seven, eight. Then three, seven, nine. And then the last one we just discussed, four, three, zero. Now we are starting in order. We're, next item is item number twenty-four, three, eight, two. May I have a motion to discuss?
Sanchez moves.
Tarver, seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Tarver. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Alright, is there any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, this is a project that we've discussed at some length, but all this resolution is doing is simply just amending the numbers. It's kind of a housekeeping resolution to bring the total allotment down of revenue recoupment for this project, for this part of the project, from about three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars to three hundred thousand dollars. So really, that has nothing to do with whether or not we want to pursue anything else related to this project. It's simply just a housekeeping matter, so I'd ask for your support.
Is there any further discussion on this item? See none, see none, and I see none online. Clerk, could you please call the roll? Okay, this is for twenty-four dash three, eight, two. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Igbal? I'm sorry. Jubey?
Jubey, aye.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kaius?
Kaius, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis? Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Yes.
Sergeis? Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams? Young?
Yes.
Passes. All one nay. Alright, may I please have a motion in a second to discuss and potentially pass item number twenty-four, three, nine, zero?
Madam Chair, this is Kaius. I would like to bring this to the state's attorney's attention. I believe you may recall, I asked that this be removed to revert to the administration committee, because we didn't have enough information. At the time, I've been informed that we do have the information now, although we did remove this to the administration committee in our, the earlier part of our meeting last week or earlier this week, whenever that was, last week. But I would ask that we reconsider this at this time, and I would move that we take it forward. So I would move resolution twenty-four dash three, nine, zero.
Okay, very good.
If that's appropriate.
Okay, very good. Is there a second?
Berman, second.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Alright, is there any discussion on this? I see no discussion. With that, clerk, please call the roll. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, aye.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kaius?
Kaius, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez? Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Yes.
Sergeis?
Yes.
Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Passes. Thank you all. Alright, may I please have a motion in a second to discuss and potentially pass item number twenty-four, three, nine, seven?
Bates moves.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Second, please.
Berman?
Tarver, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Saying yes. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I have a question on this. This change order puts us over forty thousand dollars. Does that affect going out to bid? Did we go out to bid on this in the first place because the original was under thirty thousand? So I'm just, like, a little clarification on that.
Alrighty. Are you prepared to speak to that, Mr. Kaius? No?
I think Bates actually came from energy, environment.
Okay.
So this was a contract that we hired a consultant for to help us write a grant proposal. The original contract was for twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. That was, we expected that to come in much under that actual price. What happened in the ensuing month or two was that one of our employees needed to go on to light duty, so we had to have the contractor plead the work that was expected to be done in-house by our staff. So that's when we had to add ten thousand-some dollars this ten thousand-some dollars, this nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven. So we, when we realized that we needed to make this more official and bring it through the board, we did this change order. So it did not go out to bid. The change order was required because one of our staff people got sick. So that's, that's where it stands today. And we took it to the state's attorney, and they helped us. Vince Coyle, and I think John Frank helped us work this out.
All right, so that, the question was, that would exempt it, my understanding, it would exempt that from having to go out to bid?
Yes.
So may I, let's make a follow-up to the state's attorney's office?
That'll be fine, Mr. Frank, I recognize you. And then, Mr. Young, I see your hand up as well.
What, what is the question?
Well, the question is, bringing us up to over forty thousand dollars, does that, does that make us not follow our own ordinances?
This is a tough one. The, the concern I have is the fact that the original offer was for twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. As a best practice for the county, these are the kind of contracts I would recommend to still take out for bid. My understanding of the situation is that it truly was meant to be way lower than the twenty-nine thousand eight-fifty. That said, you know, kind of as a general guideline for all executive directors maybe listening, if you're going to be anywhere in the twenty-five to thirty range, maybe think about taking it to bid for these type of situations that happen. Because even if the reason for the change order is completely legitimate, which to my understanding, at least to what I've been told is, it still runs the risk of looking like something else. So my recommendation would be to generally not put yourselves into this situation. But to the extent that this purchase order can make the change order a little bit more legitimate, that's fine. The ultimate answer is resolutions don't cure issues if they already exist. My understanding is this is not an issue. So if this gets passed, it changes somewhat the situation. But at the end of the day, the change order was already effectively done. So this is more of just asking the board to kind of sign off on what was ultimately done.
The work has been completed, I would assume?
Yeah, and the thing, the way this works unfortunately is, is that because the vendor has already done the work, they are owed the money. So no matter what the county will have to pay, the question really at the end of the day is whether or not the county board should be looking to kind of approve situations like this through a resolution, as if it is basically sanctioning it. So again, my understanding from what I'm being told is that this is completely legitimate and appropriate. But the concern I have is that twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars looks problematic.
All right, very good. Ms. Gums, and then, yes, sir, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you. I did have the opportunity to speak with Ms. Bates about this, and I know our state's attorney has suggested it may appear to be something that it's not. I, I I think this is a unique situation. I have no issue with it, and I will be supporting it. But I do note that if it comes close, as you said, Mr. Frank, twenty-five to thirty, probably should be handled differently. I'm good with this one.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask, who gave permission to the vendor to do the additional work that was ten thousand-some dollars?
Uh, I, I think I could say it was Ms. Walnick and Ms.
Why don't, Ms. Walnick, why don't you come up and answer that, please?
Thank you. Jody Walnick, Director of Environmental and Water Resources. I did approve the vendor to go beyond the original contract with the discussion with Ms. Bates in light of the person that we had in our office that was on light duty. I would also note that in our purchasing ordinance, this change order does follow the letter of the purchasing ordinance. If a contract goes over thirty thousand, that this is the procedure that's to be followed. In addition to that, this vendor was acquired under the Professional Services Selection Act that does not allow the county to ask for quotes prior to hiring a vendor. The vendors are to be interviewed, which is, we have worked with this vendor in the past and have followed that Professional Services Selection Act, which is referenced in our purchasing ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young, you have your hand up?
I did, I did. Thank you, David Young. Uh, I will be voting against this. The, the other part of the story is that I was the one that started this this whole thing. I, I saw that Confluence Climate Consulting had forty thousand dollars roughly given to them, and then I was looking at the purchasing ordinance that states that if it's over thirty thousand, you know, it needs to go out to bid. And so I brought this to the attention of John Frank and Jody Walnick, and and they said, oh, yeah, we need to do this. We need to, we need to put a, a, a resolution in place to, to to make sure that, you know, we're doing things as what is stated in that change order in the purchasing ordinance. And the problem is that this is all done after the fact, and after I had even said something. If I wouldn't have said anything, we wouldn't even have this resolution here. And the whole twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars is so close to the thirty thousand dollar mark, it's just like Mr. Frank said, it just seems problematic. And but that, that's the rest of the story. The, the ordinance, the change ordinance was followed after I had brought this to their attention. And I, I have a feeling it would not have even come to discussion if it wasn't for that email that I had sent out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I, perhaps, we've got three other board members to speak. I have a question that, Ms. Walnick, just clarification between the Professional Service Act and going out to bid for the procurement. Ms. Strathman, and then Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that this is a correction of a situation, and I think this is actually an effort to be transparent, and I will be supporting this today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ross?
This, Roth here. It was discussed in environmental, and I'm not gonna put words in Jody's mouth, but she said if she had to do it over. You know, she was short on inside staff, and they had the consultant do more, and that turned out not to work like it, you know. And untransparency, you know, and what I heard today was, Ms. Bates was talking to Jody. I would just recommend in the future, all committees need to bring it back to the entire committee, and not just the chairperson for transparency's sake. And I agree with Mr. Frank's. I don't think we need to change anything other than the guideline. And when you approach twenty-five, then we should highly recommend that it becomes a
Great scale. Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sanchez here. Yeah, just looking at all the information here, it seems obvious. There's no malicious intent behind any of this. I've seen some of these types of agreements where we have to go over, and, you know, staff can't do the work. We have to have consultants do it. Sometimes the cost of projects go up. I do think this is, you know, a conversational point, maybe have a sort of checklist for department heads, just to encourage, as Mr. Frank said, if it's gonna be in the twenty-five thousand dollar and over range, perhaps we, you know, maybe have a little more transparency, bring things forward to the committee. It's not just the, the decision of, of the committee chair necessarily, or at least there's a conversation. There's a, a, an update that's had. But I've, I've seen things like this happen before many times. It's, 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 there's no malicious intent behind it. I, I fully approve it. And actually, I, I think Mr. Young is doing his job as a board member. It's, it's great that he, he noticed this. He brought this forward to our attention, so we can make sure that we're following proper procedure.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess what I'm wondering at this point is, why are we voting on this resolution? The vendor's been paid, the work's been done.
Has the vendor been paid?
Yes, the vendor has been paid. It's a requirement of the purchasing ordinance. If a contract goes over thirty thousand dollars, it's supposed to be approved by the committee chair, and then it should go to follow-up resolution to the county board, is what the purchasing ordinance states.
That answers your question. If I may, could you just explain the difference, or perhaps we can wait for another meeting if it's too long? What is the difference between our purchasing ordinance, which goes out to bid as it gets close to that thirty thousand mark, or the professional services, which you alluded to? What is the, quickly, what's the difference between the two? Because you've mentioned that professional services does not have to go out to bid, because you are not asking for the exact amount not to exceed.
There's not a difference. The Professional Services Selection Act is actually referenced in our purchasing ordinance. It's a qualification-based selection. And so you're not allowed to ask an engineer or architect for their fees until you've selected them as the most qualified firm. And then at that point, you negotiate the fees. If you're unable to negotiate a reasonable fee with your top firm, then you're allowed to go to your second firm. But at no point in time in any of the submittals that are qualification-based selection, do you have numbers that actually give you the amount of that contract or what that contract is gonna be until you engage with that top firm in a negotiation for the contract amount. And KDOT follows that same procedure. We, our procedure in our office is based on KDOT's procedure.
Very good. That, we're not buying widgets.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Hold on a second. Yes, sir.
Yes, the, the follow-up question that I have.
The follow-up question I have to Mr. Leonard's question is, what happens if this resolution is defeated today?
Mr. Frank, I will recognize you on that.
Lawsuit.
The quick answer is nothing.
The check has been cashed. Yes, yes, sir.
Clarify, Sheprow. The use of the term "special services" might be confusing, because special services, to me, means the services that are offered if a special service area is created. Yes, the, the correct, as Ms. Walnick has indicated, is professional services. Certain classes of professional services have been identified as, as she has explained. You do not go into it. You do it as prescribed in that act. But just wanted to make sure that we're not thinking of this as special services, as in the case of a special service area.
Correct, correct. You pick a person for their talent, or a company for their talent and skills, rather than their costs at that point. All right, I think we've got a lengthy discussion on this. I think everybody's got a full explanation as we go forward with future future resolutions that may be somewhat similar. So I think we're ready to take the roll. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, no.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, no.
Lewis?
Lewis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus? Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tappy?
Tappy, yes.
Williams?
No.
Yep, Young, no.
Still passes. Very, very good. I should, a second to discuss item number twenty-four dash
Chair, Sergeus.
Mr. Sergeus, can I get the number out of my mouth?
Before we left the last one, is, is in my opinion, on these, we're, we're ratifying something backwards and then saying this. Jared, I think you said this has happened before, and this is the way we handle it, but it's allowed to in our existing procedures, yet somehow shouldn't be allowed because we have board members voting no. Is there a corrective step that we should be taking with this, rather than just saying, okay, just wait till it happens again? How, how do we, what do we do to not let this happen again, so a contractor isn't sitting there going, what did I do wrong? I did my job. And, and an employee's going, but I thought I did everything the way you guys said to do. And then we're sitting here arguing amongst ourselves whether what we even said was the right thing. Herr Williams?
Mr. Williams, yes. I think, I, yes, please, go ahead.
I think the answer to that question is, we need to take a look at our purchasing ordinance and maybe do some revamp.
Correct, that's, thank you. And I, I do think that Mr. Ross has an excellent suggestion that is very appropriate, that if something like this happens, that, and at least forewarning, that it is thoroughly discussed at the committee level. I think that's very important, so all committee members are aware of it, if at all possible. Mr. Frank?
I, I would agree that the purchasing ordinance is in a desperate need of a review. With all due respect to Ms. Walnick, the professional services, it's a quagmire, because it really only says three different professional services, which is essentially like engineering, architecture, and I think a third one. So it's been kind of interpreted more broadly than that by a lot of the executive directors, and I think appropriately so. But it flirts, there's a risk of it. And so if you guys can clarify that and make things a lot more clear on that front, this will eliminate a lot of confusion that I've seen between departments, the purchasing department, and it just really needs cleaned up.
We all, I think we're all in total agreement with that statement. Mr. Leonard?
Madam Chair, could you and the board direct the state's attorney's office to work on correcting this purchasing ordinance, so that we can address it before we have another problem?
So we don't, we don't go back and correct problems that existed? Yes, I agree. I agree. I believe that's already been happening. I think there's a discussion that's happening right now.
We've been doing it unofficially, but now that I've kind of noticing a consensus on this, we'll put something together. The other thing you guys can do is an ad hoc rules committee that would start looking at these things on a more, you know, regular basis, because I will tell you, your current set of ordinances have been kind of put together by amendments. And I can, anybody that's ever done statutory stuff will tell you is that stuff put together by amendments always has unintended consequences. So if things can be looked over as an overhaul, that might be something for you all to think about. But to your direct question, yes, we will absolutely do that.
All right, so we, I think we do have consensus with that, that we do would like to instruct you, Mr. Frank, to put together some recommendations, take a good look at it, and then we will convene a committee to be able to review it pending your recommendations. Yes, Ms. Strathman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to put a word of caution in that we do hire professionals to run their programs and their offices. And I would, would not like to undermine them in making the decisions that they are given.
Okay.
And I think that's something that we need to consider.
And I, I, if, I don't think Mr. Williams had that intent.
No, I'm not saying anybody is. I'm saying we don't need to give them so many rules.
Yes, sir.
I just want to follow. I totally agree with Cheryl. I, I mean, the fact that Ms. Walnick has to come up here and, you know, have this conversation in front of us. I mean, we have directors. We put a lot of trust in directors. They should have authority. But at the end of the day, it comes back to us having an ordinance, which is less than desirable, evidently. And, and so thus the need to reexamine our policies.
Yeah, what, this is now several times that this has been brought up, so we're moving forward with it. Yes, I know, Mr. Frank, but this will be the last comment, please.
Just thank you for the discussion.
Okay, very good. Mr. Frank?
So believe it or not, the, the goal that we've been kind of working on has to begin to simplify it. Because I think that's been kind of the problem we've noticed, is that the rules aren't clearly stated, and people interpret things differently. So that, that will be a goal.
Concise language spelled out in very simple language and directive is very important for following universal direction. So there's no interpretation of what did he mean by that, or what did she mean by that? Okay, very good. Thank you all. Robust conversation. Well done. We are now moving on to twenty-four dash four-zero-zero. May I have a motion to discuss?
Sanchez moves.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. May I have a second?
Berman.
Mr. Berman, thank you. Discussion. None. Good. Let's call the roll. Quick. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, aye.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus? Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tappy?
Tappy, yes.
Williams?
Williams, yes.
Young?
Yes.
It passes. Okay, very good. Thank you. May I please have a motion and a second to discuss and possibly pass item number twenty-four dash four-zero-three?
Strathman makes a motion.
Strathman and Tarver, seconds. Discussion. And I see none. Clerk, call the roll. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Berman, yes.
Davist?
Davist, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Jubey?
Jubey, yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
Molina, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Silva?
Silva, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus. Tarver.
Arver, yes.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Williams.
Williams, yes.
Young.
No.
Okay, that passes with one nay. May I have a motion and a second to discuss and possibly pass item number twenty-four dash four zero five?
Gums will move.
Molina, seconds. Thank you. Discussion. Yes, yes, ma'am.
So we currently have four co-ops, which I want to remind everyone are not always the least expensive way to go. One of them is from Minnesota, one of them is from Tennessee, and two of them are from Texas. This is the fifth one that would also be from Texas. I don't know why we can't do local. I was against this before and then learned during admin that Cancom would not be able to purchase, um, I don't remember what services it was. I think that instead of approving this for a blanket for everyone to be able to use it, I think it would be appropriate for us to allow Cancom to purchase those services that they cannot purchase any other place. Otherwise, I, I just don't think I can support another co-op, especially not even in the Midwest.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okay, clerk, call the roll, please. Ellen.
Ellen, aye.
Bates.
Bates, yes.
Berman.
Berman, yes.
Davist.
Davist, yes.
Gums.
Gums, yes.
Chuby.
Chuby, no.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Kias.
Kias, yes.
Leonard.
Leonard, no.
Lewis.
Lewis, yes.
Linder.
No.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Roth.
Roth, yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Silva.
Silva, yes.
Strathman.
Atman, yes.
Sergeus.
Yes.
Tarver.
Arver, yes.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Williams.
Williams, yes.
Young.
Yes.
That passes. Very good. Three nays. May I have a motion and a second to discuss and possibly pass item number twenty-four dash four one two?
Bates moves.
Sanchez, seconds.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on this item?
Yes, sir.
I think this is a really good idea and I think everyone should support it.
Heck, yes. Yes, yes, Ms. Bates. Okay, we got, we got an I do too.
Yeah, call the question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I believe this is a grant-based funded program. Is that correct?
Please. Mark, why don't you come up?
Good afternoon, Mark Bankeroff. Uh, yes, to answer your question, this was 100% funded by the State of Illinois Department of Emerson Economic Opportunity through their RISE Grant Program, which was part of their response to the COVID-19 impacts on economies.
Excellent. Thank you.
It's going to do a lot of good for King County, a lot of good. All right, I've no.
Just, and quickly, just, it reflects the same kind of spirit that we've had here as we've done, you know, our 2020, 2030, 2040 plans and been a leader basically in Illinois and even the country for trying to have things in place like this. So I think it's, I think it's a well, well-thought-out plan.
Okay, thank you. All righty, uh, call the roll, please. Ellen.
Ellen, aye.
Bates.
Bates, yes.
Berman.
Berman, yes.
Davist.
Davist, yes.
Gums.
Gums, yes.
Chuby.
Chuby, aye.
Kenyon. Kias.
Kias, yes.
Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Linder.
Linder, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Roth.
Roth, yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Silva.
Silva, yes.
Strathman.
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus. Tarver.
Arver, yes.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Williams.
Williams, yes.
Young.
Yes.
All right. Question, if you haven't read it, please do so. Uh, it's going to be, it's a fascinating, very interesting document that you'll enjoy. You'll really enjoy reading it. It's quite, it's quite good. All right, we have one more to discuss. Item number twenty-four dash four two nine. May I have a motion?
Sanchez moves.
Gums will second.
Thank you, Ms. Gums. Discussion. Yes, yes, sir.
I know there's a lot of discussion that we have had about this, and I think at this time, it's just in our better interest to at least give us the option to, um, see what happens. And so I am in favor of this motion. I would encourage everyone in this resolution, I would encourage everyone else to, um, follow along with what I'm saying. No, I'm just kidding. I, I would encourage yes, though, just to give us the option, see what happens.
This is, yeah, we are, we are not about, we are twenty-four cats here. Uh, we are not followers but leaders. Uh, we have different, different opinions. Is there any other discussion on this item? Or we call the roll? I see none. Clerk, please call the roll. Ellen.
Ellen, no.
Bates.
Please come back to me.
Berman.
Berman, yes.
Davist.
Davist, yes.
Gums.
Gums, yes.
Chuby.
We aye.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Kias.
Kias, yes.
Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Lewis.
Lewis, yes.
Linder.
Linder, yes.
Molina.
Molina, no.
Roth.
Roth, yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Silva.
Silva, no.
Strathman.
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus.
Yes.
Tarver.
Tarver, yes.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Williams. Young.
No.
No, and Ms. Bates?
No.
Okay, still passes. It does pass. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back. Please let me, uh, get direction on item number. We have, we have twenty-four dash three seven nine. Would you like to open that back up for discussion or would you like to save that for another day?
Another day.
Another day.
Okay, all right. I'm looking for, okay, we have another days and discussion.
It seems like the discussion would be a lot more fruitful once we have the answers to the list that Ms. Chuby had.
There are some answers.
Get those answers, go.
Some answers. Already have some answers.
So whoever voted in the prevailing needs to reconsider.
Correct.
Correct. So can you go back to item number three seven nine? And it would have to, the board members for directions on this, all the board members who voted no would have to agree to.
No.
No.
A single board member who voted with the prevailing party may make a motion, which if seconded, could then be to reconsider.
Prevailing party being?
Prevailing party meaning the no votes.
Okay.
This is second.
The seconder does not have to be a person who voted on the prevailing side, only the movement.
Right. Is there a member who voted no would like to open this up back for discussion so that these items can be answered? Yes.
I would like to open it back up for discussion to get our questions answered.
Thank you. Is there?
Second.
Okay, we have many seconds. I'll give it to Mr. Kias. Okay.
Madam Chair.
I just wanted a second, so I just.
Point of order is all.
Oh, oh, sure, sure.
Do I understand Ms. Lewis's motion is a motion to reconsider, the denial of twenty-four dash three seven nine?
That's correct. Yes, that is correct. All right, so we have a motion, a second, our next steps then.
All right, the, that is debatable. And, uh, if it passes, you are then reconsidering it. It is once again as if it had just been uh, placed on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, so does everybody understand it has motion and a second? You can debate this if you want to talk about it or not, or you can just pass it for discussion.
A point, I, point of information, I'm not sure that's exactly what you said. Can we, this, the point of reconsideration, we can discuss that in length at any, anything about it, right?
Yes.
There's discussion.
It's as if it's.
You are not at the substantive discussion of the budget yet. You are discussing whether or not to reconsider the vote. That is all you're discussing right now.
That's correct. Very simple. Ms. Gums. Thank you, Madam Chair, Gums. Better the vote. Correct. Um, I don't have the data that I need. I am not prepared to continue with the discussion until those questions are answered. I don't feel that this will, the reconsider of this will get us anywhere today. I, if I may just, and I know I'm not supposed to interrupt, but I'm confused. Because this was voted down, so it's a no, we don't have a budget. We do need a budget. By law, we have to have a budget. So would we then have Mr. Berman's committee review a budget and bring it back up through that process again?
You, you could do it that way. You could also simply bring it up at the next county board meeting or the executive meeting. Any of those three options are legal.
But a brand new budget proposal.
It could even be the same budget.
Gotcha, okay.
Sheprow, you've already jumped through the hoops, preferatory to a vote on the budget, so you don't have to start over again.
Okay, Ms. Bates.
Since, since Ms. Hopkinson says she has many of the answers that were brought up today, I'm wondering if our colleagues might be comfortable after we hear Ms. Hopkinson.
Yes.
Well, but I, this is to reconsider that opportunity to have that happen, I believe.
Right. And I believe it, it's our, our vote to revisit this would be saying, well, we want to hear what Ms. Hopkinson has to say. And I do.
Okay.
Berman here. Questions.
The ones of Ms. Chuby.
How many questions are there? We don't know what those questions are. I don't, I don't have a list of those questions in front of me.
Jotted, I jotted down a lot of them.
All right, so it's, it's, we have the questions. We have, can we discuss in depth the content of the questions Ms. Chuby asked? But I'm concerned is that right now we are just asking you permission to move this forth for reconsideration. And you can vote it back down again and move it to another board meeting. But right now you have literally voted it down and you've opened up the potential for discussing this resolution. So we can't discuss content, we're just discussing whether or not, please correct me if I'm wrong, just so we can discuss this. Is that correct?
You, you can discuss.
Can discuss content.
It, it, you can't discuss reasons for or against the budget, but what I've heard so far is perfectly fine because they're talking about reasons to reconsider it today versus another time.
All right, so that means plain language.
I'm going to renew my comment, which is, yes, I want to hear from Kathy. I want to hear all of it. I'd like to have the list of questions that Ms. Chuby put out and then Kathy's answers, responses to those. Give them to me in writing and let me have a minute to digest all that. I don't want to start the reconsideration and the, in the commentary on all of that without all of us having a chance to see those two things first. So give me that and then we can go from there. And it's probably on a different day, cause, cause that's a lot to talk about right now.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Sanchez here. Maybe we could reconsider this and, and move it to finance? Would that be something that would work for us so we can have time to get those answers and questions?
When is our next finance committee is happening?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Next Wednesday.
Or move it to executive?
Okay, hold on a second. That, that item is being considered. Yes, let's get the questions answered first. Yes, ma'am.
Um, yeah, I guess my question and concern was that the finance committee had submitted a budget that was balanced. Um, and then it was taken to executive committee where executive committee decided to make amendments to that balanced budget. So if we send it back to finance, I don't think finance is going to have a different recommendation. The problem was our executive committee decided to amend the recommendations that the finance committee gave. And that's, that's why I can't approve this budget at this time. Um, so I think, I think the recommendation would be, um, to send it back to executive maybe, um, and have Ms. Chuby's questions answered there or just have a special county board meeting. Um, I think maybe the special county board meeting would be better because, um, I think the finance committee did their job.
This is special.
I agree wholeheartedly.
Send it to exec.
You know, we disregarded what the finance committee has presented to the board. And if that's it, then don't send it back to the finance committee. Let's have twenty-four board members discuss.
Special county.
You got all the answers, so let's discuss it. Or you got all the questions.
So there's a, there's an interesting, um, possibility that I'd like to share with you. I think that's prudent. We can just have a special county board meeting in the very near future to only discuss one item and that'll be the, the budget.
Perfect.
I would agree with that.
All right, Mr. Sergeus.
Madam Chair, I, if this is, um, total agreement with you, as long as your questions are in writing and those responses are forthcoming before that meeting, I'm game with that.
That, I'm hearing that, yes, Ms. Chuby.
So none of my question, all of my questions have been asked in every single finance meeting we have had and every single board meeting we've had.
Understood.
So I've asked all of them. I am happy to submit them again.
Please.
Yes.
Okay, if you could submit all those questions and in a timely matter, which I know you will do, so that Ms. Hopkinson and her team can answer all of those and send those to us.
These are pretty easy, yeah, for, for, um, our consideration. And we will schedule a meeting. Uh, is there any protocol? Cause we have a motion and a second on the table.
You have a motion and a second to reconsider.
Yes.
If that motion passes, you may then take any of a variety of actions ranging from adjourning the meeting to, to calling a special board meeting, to send it back to committee. Uh, all of those would be, uh, appropriate.
Somebody could even make a motion to table it or send it over to another date now and it's priority motion. So it can just be done now if you want to do it that way.
Okay, so we're going to do.
You can't. Waiting for Ms. Lewis to withdraw her.
That's what I was.
We have a motion.
You have to vote on it.
Okay, we've already, let's just, okay, we're taking a vote right now to reconsider.
She's withdrawn it.
She can withdraw her motion and not vote on this.
Correct. Okay, so we're taking a motion or a vote?
No, I, I will withdraw it. And who seconded it?
Mr. Kias, do you want to withdraw your motion?
No.
No? Okay, so.
Well, you've got to have a dissenting member move it. You do not have a dissenting member moving it right now.
To second, you don't have to.
Correct.
That'd be correct, so it fails. Okay, so, all right, so that, we had a lively discussion again, learned a lot. Um, so I would like to have a recommendation that we have to pass the budget. Uh, we know that we would like to have Ms. Chuby's, um, questions in writing submitted to Ms. Hopkinson.
Yes, and if I could just say one really, really, really important thing, please. I, I really feel like I do need to answer one question. Um, it said that the budget has been changed. The budget that was put on display on September fourth has not been changed. We can't. I have, I have no authority to change it. The budget that was put on display on September fourth has not been changed. We can't. I ha- I have no authority to change it. Only the board does. So.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we've got a motion that's changed. I would like to recommend that we take this budget. Ms. Jubey's going to put her questions in writing. There's going to be a response in writing from Ms. Hopkinson. It'll be sent out to the full board. We'll be, um, I go upstairs, we'll see at a convenient time, uh, that we can all meet only to discuss one item, the budget.
Could other board members also submit questions to Kathy in writing?
I.
And then get.
You suggest that you should do that.
Yes, please, yes.
You don't then get to that meeting and say, well, I have questions.
So it, that if you.
That way, all the questions will be submitted.
Ms. Ms. Gums, I see you. Please. If, and when would you like to have those questions submitted to you? So there is a deadline.
Whenever. I mean, it doesn't matter.
It's Wednesday. How about a week from Tuesday? Or I mean, today, you'll have one full week, Tuesday at four thirty, please, by next Tuesday. It'll give you several days to think about it, almost a full week, uh, to think about it. And that way she will have time. That'll be your last one. Okay? All right, Ms. Gums.
Thank you. Um, when we have this, Gums here, when we have this next meeting, you did indicate that we should only be talking about one thing. I would propose that it be two things because we have an executive session that was not completed. And there's information that we need to handle.
Uh, Ms. Gums, that would be appropriate. We have to make sure that all twenty-four board members participated in the request that was given forth by Mr. Frank. Um, and that to date has not yet happened. So until that number reaches twenty-four, I do not feel comfortable adding that on because.
Madam Chair, I disagree.
Board has the authority to go into closed session at any time.
I know that. Correct. Madam Chair, just piggybacking on that, everybody was granted the opportunity. I disagree that everybody has to take the opportunity to go forward with an executive session. I, I fundamentally disagree with that.
Um, it's, I would not argue with you on that, and this is not going to be missing words, ma'am, but this is very important information that I believe to make a good decision, we all have to be aware of what the content of that material is about.
I could not agree more.
That is why I mentioned that. We've got two gentlemen who would like, Mr. Berman, please.
Can't go into closed session.
Well, could we change that to be the special county meeting? You have enough time to do that. It moves it up one day from what you were saying.
Want to close session during Cal?
We're not going, what are we going into closed session for? No, this is for the, this is for the board meeting.
I apologize. I think his question was, we have a, a committee of the whole meeting.
Can we change that?
And we can go into closed session during a committee of the whole meeting because no decisions are going to be made.
Correct.
But.
Well, we, since we already have that schedule, could we change that to be a special county board meeting?
County board meeting. And, and, um, I would have to see if it's important because I believe that there is some critical information that was going to be brought forward at the committee of the whole. Let me make that determination to see what, uh, what that content, how critical that is because we just may have a very long afternoon. Okay, so. That, that's what I just said. We may, we may have a, a long afternoon. And we just, we may move one up earlier to one o'clock. Can you please check your calendars now? Are you available next Tuesday at one?
We have a Forest Reserve meeting at two. That afternoon?
Yeah, Forest Reserve Finance, right?
Yes, sir.
So that would be impossible.
That would be impossible.
Until you, we've perfected cloning. Yes.
Not available in the evening.
Okay, so.
Just work on it.
Again, we're hurting, we're hurting twenty-four different leaders.
If I might, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We're going to do a special meeting to discuss budget items. If we could have a closed session discussion to continue.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, that's fine. That's fine. We can, we can add the two, two.
Add that one.
Please, I would encourage all of you, not mandate, I would encourage all of you to do your homework assignment. Very important.
About Tuesday afternoon.
How many people have read the report?
Not more.
Board members have read the report.
Like how many exactly? I, I asked you that earlier today.
Um, I think when I last counted, we're at ten have read. There's three or four that have scheduled to read, and so we're probably a little bit over half. And then there's others who have asked if they could come, but I haven't gotten anything scheduled. So.
Okay.
Um, I really would recommend just call me, text me, whatever. I will get it set up. There's always someone in our office, basically from eight thirty to four thirty at least, possibly five o'clock, five thirty. Just let us know what works for you.